Meeting, or not meeting, excuse me, work session together to discuss our budget. I'd like to thank our county commissioners that took their time out and showed interest in looking at our budget. I want to thank all three of y'all for being here. And I guess right now I'm going to turn it over to Rick Smith and Ms. Norman.
Well, we normally have one. Normally you'd ask, and I appreciate you asking, but we need to go. I think it's a good time too to, to, and I'm glad to see you, to tell you just to tell you the station here also. We're just going to say a little bit about briefly, I want to recap very laid back. If you have any questions, feel free to ask. Then normally you're just going to go with the budget again. Basically, I can have flies already, just with the main question. Before we get started, Mr. Lewis is not here because his mother passed away. Keep doing your prayers. Mr. Glover's father is in really bad shape, having really quick. He's really come on and he's got a long way to recovery. So keep doing your prayers. And then Marty, I think I called traffic in Atlanta.
He's in Atlanta, yes.
What's Dylan at? All right, Dylan's going to keep this moving a little bit here. This is what I call the hub in talking about funding. We're going to start out how this all came about. You got the dashboard. Ready to go up?
And one other thing I'd like to say also to our commissioners, if you have any questions, anytime that we're going through this, you feel free to talk. You don't have to raise your hand up to be acknowledged. This is an open meeting and everyone of you three that would like to talk more than welcome to.
At any time, just to ask if you got anything. He's going to look at the dashboard to you a little bit about Smith County. I think it's very interesting. And it's leading into the, and let me say this, I would never advise a county to base its funding on vocational students. That wouldn't be very smart, to say the least. It is a bonus. It is icing on the cake, but I would never base my total funding on that, for sure. But, and as a matter of fact, normally trying to get state to give you a concrete number and what they advise you not to give one, is that correct? But we've obviously done something right to be where we're at. We've got a lot of things figured out and different systems want to see what we're doing. Where this all came about, looking at the dashboard, these, the reason we're putting this on here, we're showing you what we're going, some of the things. Tommy, we've talked to you before about, you know, for example, where you work. The dashboard, you, you, you will remember being fortunate to see this, but you'd be amazed at how many people we've got driving out of the county and driving into the county. Obviously, some things we want to offer in our new vocational courses would be to help industry to keep our bright youth at home, but it would also help the workforce because it's needed here. So that's where this is going. And the way this came about a few years ago during Obamacare, some of you remember that, when Obamacare, yeah. Macon County's a very good school to compare us to, their system, numbers wise, teacher wise, and so on. Well, they've got about three or four times the funding than we did. So I got to research and why, why. Well, Macon County was utilized at the time, the vocational school over there still are. So every student that came through those two high schools were CTE students. And they don't tell you none of that, but that's the guy, I won't use his name, going, said, I'm going to teach you the redneck BEP formula. So that's what we started doing to figure out how to, how to clean up a lot of stuff. We're not lying, we're not stealing, cheating. We're putting the truth down, maximizing, trying to get. And that's where, that's where our hub comes in. All right, I'll let you go through some more of that, where the people want to see that.
This is the, from the state report card two, showing our CTE concentration rate for our district versus the state. And you can, you can see how much higher our district is already.
What percentages are there Dylan? They can't say.
The district percentage is eighty-three point five and the state is fifty-nine point seven.
So we're maximizing money there normally more than in most systems.
And this shows those different job clusters and the expected growth in each one.
And I think that's what, for some of it, but we need to look at about two of the courses down there. We obviously need to keep the Megatronics because we've been told from, from Motlo State that like one course, you know, we're doing kind of like a scholarship, take five basically on each side. And hopefully, if we get ten a year graduated out of that, that they're starting out from a hundred and twenty, a hundred and forty-five dollars a year, it'd be pretty good to be eight, ten, and nineteen-year-old making that kind of money. So we're, I don't think we need to tear it from that, but we need to look at working with the industry and figuring out what the needs are here, maybe for our other two courses after we get. Tim, you step in because this is your, your expertise about where we're going with this. So seeing that, leaving out there need to add to.
Well, we, we, over the last probably three or four years, we've expanded our CTE programs, our offerings. So it benefits us in terms of funding, but it's the, it's the right thing to do for kids. And the research has shown that students, they may not know for sure what they're going to do when they graduate high school, but if they've seen it or had exposure to it, you know, the likelihood of them having success post-high school, post-secondary, it goes up tremendously, whether that be college or trade school or whatever credential they're looking for post-high school. If they've got, you know, a frame of reference, if they've had some training to identify things that they're interested in, they're a whole lot more likely to complete those once they get out of school. And our numbers of students going to trade school and going to post-secondary have steadily increased, as opposed to when I was in school, it was just either go to work or go to college. And really, you didn't necessarily identify what you were, I mean, we just didn't, just weren't, weren't the same offerings weren't there. You know, go to, I went to college, but I hadn't, still didn't really know what I wanted to do with a college degree. So what we're trying to do now, we're, we've taken that down as low as fifth grade, trying to expose our students to these different career fields, to see what they're interested in. Now, the district we're, of our size, we can't offer every single CTE program that we've had, but some of those conferences, I mean, we have every year, we do a local, and probably some of the folks here in the room are part of this, but we do a local advisory council to see what programs are needed, what jobs we have locally and also regionally. And we also, this year, the upper Cumberland, all the school districts in the upper Cumberland did a regional advisory council as well to see what, what jobs are available, things that are coming on the horizon so that we can meet the needs of the workforce in that.
Well, the neat thing is around the campuses, and we're going to talk about that in a minute as far as funding. You know, the wellness centers are obviously for athletics, but they're not. It's going to be one of the biggest hubs in the wheel, one of the biggest spokes in the funding of this, and I'm going to explain it in a minute. But you're going down now to the seventh grade, we've got a system where those kids will be busting here from Union Heights, Port River, when we get all this going like it should be. If you'll notice the greenhouse, you need to do a little more bragging on the stuff you've done. What have you secured? About three point two million in grants over three point?
Yeah, that innovative school model, and it was, I think that's what it was, three point two million dollars. The high schools got the biggest portion of those funds, million dollars for each high school. And then any schools that had, you had, I think, oh, let's see, I can't remember.
Well, you, we bought, we secured Saban, a prime.
Yeah, I'm just trying to think that what.
You bought two of those, you bought, we've done a lot of good things that, because tax pay is absolutely anything which is going to help with funding. And then the neat thing about, about the new system, the way it is, when we went through or when, you know, not long ago, you just had to pick a path. You know, my son, I hate, he's going to miss out, my oldest on this. He might get to take a forty-two, but Tucker's a prime example. You know, find a welder right now, a plumber, electrician, you can. Well, Tucker could be on track to be a vet, which hopefully is what he wants to do or something on that line, but he could get his welder certificate coming through school. You know, you don't have to be locked in. And that goes back again, the reason I'm touching on this thing is while we increase the credits, okay? But go ahead, if you got anything else, and I'll get into the hub.
So we've done the site log, we've done the, or working towards that. Greenhouse back here hired and started that CTE program at the middle school. We have bought some software and equipment for students in sixth through eighth grade to do some hands-on applications that, you know, it's not practical for a safety or, you know, to bring a fifth-grade student to let them, you know, bring them into automotive shop or bring them into welding shop. But cool thing is technology that's out there today, you can do virtual reality type stuff to get kids to be able to see that. And I, Mr. Smith, we played with that one day, got one of those machines.
Like Brian Smith and him was going to do me?
Well, you remember that day, that laptop, it was just, you could pull an engine, you could pull an engine out on a, you know.
And this out here in front of you like in the movies, then you could pick up.
Pick apart, see how it works.
Pretty, you know, pretty cool.
We've bought some equipment, software to expose those younger learners to those fields and, so Suburbans we purchased, they've been used since we bought them for our CTE students going to different competitions and, and things. And then we've got those, we hired two positions with those grant funds, those CTE career coaches, which have done a tremendous job this year because they have gone through with our six, students in grade six, twelve, and with their, with their teachers, helping them identify a six-year plan. So a student in seventh grade, not, not that it's set in stone, but we do career assessments where they can do interest inventory, see the types of things they're interested in, and then map out a plan. So if I'm in seventh grade and I think I want to be a, let's say I want to go into nursing. So we, we talk, those career coaches will sit down and talk with them, okay, we've got health science programs in high school. So what you, you're going to take your core courses. And then a good thing to sign up, if you want to go into healthcare, would be to take those health science courses as you go. And these are certificates you can earn along the way. Here are courses you might want to take and what you need to be thinking of post-secondary. So if I want to be a nurse, there's a licensed practical nursing program with TCAT, which we can get you right in the door there with our CNA program that starts here. Or if you want to be a registered nurse, you're probably thinking on a two-year or four-year degree program. So it just outlines those things. And let's, you know, I mean, I'm that way in my own life. Need to get things down on paper, have a plan if I want to try to accomplish that. And it, we keep all those.
But how cool is it going to be to get your CNA degree basically before you leave here, even if you're going to be a RN?
Yeah.
You know, you walk out of high school, you get your CNA degree.
And, you know, kids that want to go to medical school, we encourage them to, you know, need to have that practical experience under your belt before you do that. So I think we had six students this year. Ms. Gutter did a fantastic job, a hundred percent pass rate on that. She's got double that I think signed up for next year.
She didn't hit me up. She's on the phone, she's up, but, but that, that's all, you know, obviously free money. But, but we're spending a lot of time on this to tell you how part of the budget works, okay? But the two buildings that we built, the wellness centers, we're going to, we're going to have hopefully about four and a half, five million in them completed. I had one commercial builder tell me that we couldn't build one of them for eight to ten million now. But that's all free, it's all free money. And now I'm going, are you down to ten point time? All right, now I'm going to talk about the hub a little bit, okay? The, it's a wheel, and you got to have one to have the other, okay? Now, when you guys, the other day, and I hope we explain this, but when you pass, you went from twenty-three credits to twenty-four to twenty-eight, okay? That's still going to give you four credits to be flexible with, okay? But we've had some students that didn't play athletics or anything, they could graduate in three years and that was fine, all right? But now, a kid or a young, a young man or woman that's on college track can be a four year student, thirty on ACT, they're going to have to have some credits to do something with. Well, well, you're going, hopefully what we're going to encourage is them to be able to go do something fun and pick up a trade, all right? And doing that, when you encourage that, something fun, pick up a trade, that's when you're going to increase your funding tremendously, when they start becoming CTE students. Now, the reason the wellness centers are so important in making that happen, our coaches are excited because we're moving most of our sports to after school. And as a parent, you're going to say, oh, that ain't good. No, it's the best, Goins was a prime example. You're sharing one gym over there from third grade, basically, all the way up, every sport, volleyball, basketball, it range footballs in there, all right? So right now, if you're the girls' basketball coach, you're trying to get out of there, if you're working, eight or nine, ten o'clock at night, okay? Now you're going to have the flexibility to have three gyms, three practices going at one time. We, the coaches, and you know how it is, sports is huge in this county, whether we like it or don't. We get them bought into this, and they're okay with it. Coaches encourage it. It encourages them to make this happen, okay? So if we can move most of our sports to after school, we ain't going to get them all. We're going to get a lot of them. Make it a good time to get them all, all right? That's going to get me out of there with my daughter or my son at five or six o'clock instead of eight or nine o'clock, all right? And that's where it's so important with wellness. Again, it's going to cost little if none to locally. Okay, we may have to put in a little at the end, but we think we're really close. So increasing the credits is going to force them, basically buy, to take extra credit, open your CTE courses or CTE courses, which is going to increase the funding. Norm, have you got, have you got the sheets for the way?
Yes, son, I laid this out.
Should be in the packet.
Uh, well, at their.
But I would never encourage a county or a school system to base their funding off of a school system.
Can you pull the one up that shows the unique learners on it, or are they together? So I'm referring to the one on the left. So TESA is, you know, it's not just CTE. The base is there at the top, seven thousand and seventy-five dollars per student. It's the base. So TESA is based on attendance, because the more students we have on ADM, the more money we get. But it's also based on these unique learning categories that is listed here. At the bottom, you have your CTE at five thousand dollars per student. And testing, you know, the better students do on testing, like ACT in the third grade test, the more money we get. So it's a combination.
Oh, we're just thinking on, where she's talking about on the seat, we're, we're at two twenty-eight point five one. That's what we really want to target, increase it. You know, we're not going to get a hundred percent. We know that. We're not going to get. But we think we can really hammer that number right there, okay?
So it's a combination of all of this that gives us our TESA funding. So it's not just CTE. But because CTE is one of the biggest numbers that you see there, five thousand dollars per student.
And it's one week a faith.
That's where we've zoned in and have really been working the last couple of years to try to increase this funding. So, but we did want you to see how that was allocated and all the different areas that affects the money that we get.
And do you want to, do you want to, do y'all have any questions for me? It's just.
No, the virtual training that you were talking about just a moment ago, if the kids don't think today in the world, I was doing it ten years ago, with the state and Fed. Yeah, I was, I was talking to people on a screen, interacting with them and having to do my training through that ten or twelve years ago.
Well, that's one of the, I think that's one of the policies that come out of COVID, is that we learned a lot of better management. We don't have to have offices. We can do the same thing from Zoom and save mileage and save the office space.
Yeah, that and it was, it was training that, they were interacting with me and they wasn't even live. That was just, when I would say, they would respond to me.
Yeah.
I'm sure juniors.
Yeah, they interact with, interact with your actions, your demeanor.
And that was kind of twelve years ago. And it, and it's still going on.
Well, I see you're saying that when he had an officer today. I mean, that, that was like something in a space. I mean, it had that motor that broke it down and.
Yeah. Well, you, you'll walk in a room this size and it'll just be screens from one side to the other.
What was it, man? Have you done?
No, but you did have to, had to be in front of the screen.
I think we had done, it was wobbly.
That works so well that several police departments, especially the letting police department, they've got a whole room in their police department dedicated just to that. So it is very good training.
And that's the technical training, personal training, everything. It's, so what they're getting to experience now is what they're going to experience when they get into a profession. And it's awkward. When you first do it, it's really awkward. It's, you don't think it would respond.
It would be as in-depth as what you're, like Brian Smith has told us, if we go to construction around, they could get another hour or should be like simulated, a whole lot like flight simulator, you know, skit steer, bulldozer. We get all that before they ever got all that equipment.
Well, we had that as well. It's like sitting in a car and sit down, open the door, get in, and it's like a video game.
And I do want to say this is still an estimate. Just like last year, the TESA funding for FY twenty-five is not final until July. So we get all final numbers in July, but this is a pretty good estimate of what.
See where it says estimate? We get one every month and it changes.
Yeah.
I'm sure it's hard to lock in an exact number. And, you know, when you deal with them, you don't know what they're going to do five years down the road, three years down the road.
Because legislators are voting on this.
If we didn't know what the TESA formula was three years ago, I mean, no.
So we're learning also, to be honest.
We had, what, no child left behind? You don't, that's all left behind, but you know. So you don't even hear it in the home, so.
When did they update these? At least it says April estimate. When will y'all have made?
We.
We don't know, just when.
Haven't gotten it yet, yeah. And they, and they have been known to skip a month. People want to know the honest truth because there's so much going on right now. We may not get another one until June or July. We just, as we receive them, we, we try to share.
That's why I always said it's stupid to do a budget till we get our final, but we, we don't have anything that's just to do with that.
And we also don't know how much enrollment is increasing. We expect it to be increasing. So everything about the budget, you know, is always changing with the school system, so.
Now, I'm going to say, then I'm going to let you, but, but basically, I told you that the budget's the same with the following exceptions, okay? Obviously, it changes due to enrollment. Like I got a phone call today, we're going to have to increase, is it pre-K?
Kindergarten.
Kindergarten. We've got one pre-K going to increase too.
Okay.
So we know we're already going up the bat. We've got a school or two that's on the boat. So we never know what that is. As y'all know, it's got to be at twenty point five or less, the K three. It has to split at twenty-six. We pretty much maximize that to the, as far as you can, the more schools you got, the less inefficient it is. If you had one school, you can make it work. And you've got ninety, thirty-five. Now, high school's thirty-five to one. So it just depends. And so you have a lot, when you look at, you're sitting there thinking, well, they're well under capacity. Well, they are in, as far as the box, but the box has got to split at thirty-five even, or at twenty point five or twenty-six. You may have had thirteen, thirteen students in, which is very inefficient, but by law, we're going to do that, okay? We, we, as you asked, we put ten percent in for all staff across the top. Medical benefits for all full-time, non-certified employees. That's something I think, I understood the commission wanted to, all findings off, that's a one point six million dollar hit yearly. We were paying about thirty-five to seventy thousand on a fine, but we were taking a finding for it.
And Mr. Smith, that does increase every year, medical insurance does. So that is.
And then seven thousand dollars for lighting and field on, split on, to be split on both sides. So that, that, and then as far as capital outlay, well, we're finishing these building projects up. It's about the only difference, but it is a one difference. So with that, I'll let Norm.
So the ten percent raise that I was asked to put in the budget is coming, like we talked, you know, about, is about two point five million dollars for the cost of that, which will be reoccurring, happening every single year. The medical insurance for about a hundred and eighty-seven employees, that's non-certified employees, full-time, is approximately one point six million dollars. And then, of course, that will increase. They tell me to estimate five percent every year. So we don't know, we don't know, I don't know, think we have the final insurance cost for this coming year yet. And then the capital outlay, we'll get to just in a moment. So I could spend ten hours on this budget if you really wanted me to, but we're not going to. I'm going to highlight some of the major changes and then I'll give you time to ask questions. So I, I don't want to rush, but at the same time, we only have an hour, probably thirty minutes at this point, so.
I got one question. Do we feel like all hundred and eighty-seven employees protect this insurance?
I think you have, I think we see this, and I don't, I don't want to say it selfishly, but we have a lot of times, we'll say a spouse have it and they'll take it anyway just because it's free. I think if you offer it, you'll have a highly, a very high, and we've not done a survey, but I've looked at ninety, I don't know that, but I think you'll have a lot. Because a lot, a lot of our people work paid for insurance. That's what their secondary spouse or, you know, I think you'll have a high.
Yeah, I think it'll be high. If it's free, they're going to take it, even if they don't need it, because we can't offer.
That's what I'm trying to say. A lot of them takes it just because it's free.
Well, I know a lot of insurance, my insurance here, Andy takes it. She can't be a secondary. My insurance will not last.
Oh, okay.
A lot of insurance companies nowadays don't last so long.
And, and we could have an incident if somebody's on the marketplace, they wouldn't want to accept a full-time position either. That's the things we got to talk about a little later on. But we, we still feel like that most of the employees wouldn't want that, so, yes.
For budget purposes, over.
Yes. For budget purposes, we always overestimate expenditures. So if we say we've got a hundred and eighty-seven non-certified.
Were they telling you about a five percent increase after the property you haven't yet?
Uh, we don't know yet. They're not, not being advised yet anyhow.
And this insurance package we're going to be offering them is the county insurance package, not the school system.
Yes. That's what I figured, the cost of theirs. I'd have to look back to see what that one's called.
About nine thousand dollars they cost.
It's called a limited PPO. It's, it's the same as what, it's, it's the county, I was told, offers their employees. So it's not the most expensive plan, but it's not the cheapest either.
It's a really good.
It's a good one.
Yeah, Mr. Glover said.
Yeah, it's a good one.
Rick, it's good. We get a lot of, I won't mention the county, but we get a lot of employees back that go to accounting, coasts to us because they're got insurance, but it's not a, it's not a name brand and it didn't, they tell us that those are much better, so they end up coming back, especially if they've got families.
So the first two pages of the budget is revenue. Of course, that's the money that we're bringing in. And the two largest pieces of revenue on this first page is property tax, estimated to be in the county gave me these estimates, three million dollars approximately. And then if you look down to sales tax, local option sales tax, four oh two one oh, it's also approximately three million dollars. So the MOE for the county right now is about six point four million. And they are keeping us at that MOE and not giving us any increase in property tax. TESA is on the second page. That is our largest revenue. It's Tennessee investment and student achievement, estimated this year, as you can see from your other handouts, at twenty-three million, four hundred ninety-seven thousand, eight hundred and eighty-seven dollars. And that is up four point seven million dollars from BEP in twenty-twenty-three. So Joe's double checking me there. Am I right, Joe? He turned around there to look.
I can't see this.
Please double check me. So if I, yeah, so it should be exactly according to that estimate on that other sheet that you had. Tim's ISM grant, I did want to point that out, is under other vocational, seven, four, six, seven, nine, oh. And that is about one point one five oh million dollars. So that is, you know, that's not going to be every year. That's going to be some of his expenditures for the Sable Lot building. So if you look at the bottom of page two, the revenue is approximately thirty-two million dollars. So thirty-two point five six six million dollars is where we're looking at. And again, I never overestimate revenues, you know? It's based on what we've received in the past. And if we get more, that's awesome. If we don't, we still know this is the minimum amount. The expenditures start on page three. And again, I'm not going to go through each and every category, but I do want you to know that seven, one, one, zero, zero category is our largest category of teachers in the entire budget. This is where most of our teachers and most of our EAs come out of. So you will actually find in this category, seven, one, one, zero, zero, ninety-six, full-time, non-certified employees that we will be offering insurance to if this budget is passed and moves forward. And then others are spread out throughout the budget of where, what category they fall under. But this one happens to be the largest one. Okay, that's page three at the top, so. Okay, that's page three at the top, so first page of expenditures is on page three. If you would go to page four, let's look at the CTE budget for a moment, 71300. So in the midsection of the page is Tim's CTE program, and there is approximately $500,000 in those expenditures for the ISM grant. Some of that's salary, some of that's equipment, but part of that grant is within that major category of career and technical education. Page five, if you would go there with me, to other student support. And again, the page number's on the top. 72130, under 189, other salaries and wages. It's mandated by the state that we provide tutors for the lower grades. ESTER paid for those positions last year. This year, moving forward in FY25, we will have to pick that cost up of approximately $150,000. Six positions. We do use retired teachers for that, and they're paid a contracted pay, but that's mandated by the state. And yes, I do have $158,000 out there, 8,000 more than 150, but I always plan for a little bit extra, okay? So that's a, that's a big hit there, moving forward. We don't know how long that will be mandated. Part of that's because of the COVID loss, the achievement loss that students, you know, got during, missing for COVID. Let's go to board of education on page seven. So board of education has more categories now. Since we no longer have a finance office, I moved all the finance expenses over into the board of education. So if you look down the middle column, under board of education, 72310, anywhere where you see a zero in the middle column, that is a new category. And I'll show you why just in a moment. So it's not new positions. We are moving everything from the finance department over to this category, and we are paying bookkeepers through October 1 in this budget, because that's what the county asks us to do. And then they will take over all salaries and benefits from that point. If you go to page eight, there you will see the finance department, the bottom, physical services, physical services, 72510. And if you notice in the last column, zeroed out. Zeroed, 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 all the way out. So we no longer will have a finance department as of October 1. So that's a big change in our budget. Let's go to capital outlay and talk about that a little bit. You'll find that on page 11. So we always have capital outlay. It's just in the past, we have never planned on spending most all of it. It's just been in there for proposed projects that might happen, could happen, for emergencies. But this time, the capital outlay is already allocated for what I'm getting ready to tell you, okay? So you can see that your capital outlay is $2,075,000, right? There, under 76100. Out of that, $650,000 will go toward finishing the wellness centers, because after all, if we don't finish the wellness centers, then we can't increase credits and do all of the plan that you guys have had for a few years now, working on the five-year plan. Tim's ISM grant for the Save-A-Lot building is $602,000. And again, that's coming, reimbursed money coming from that grant. And then the baseball lots at each of the high schools, we estimate it to be coming in at $700,000. Now, I did put a little extra in here because common sense says you can't go a full school year and not have something break or tear up. So within this capital outlay, there's $123,000 there in case we need it. If we don't need it, it won't be spent. So that's how you add up to that total that you see. So the difference this time is, we plan on spending most of that capital outlay from get-go, early on. Whereas in the past, only if an emergency or something broke, or we had, you know, possibly something planned, but this time it's all planned. So that gets you to the total budget on page 12. So if you look there, we are at $40.9 million. So yes, Joe, that is going to hit fund balance. He's turned around there and just looked. So if you go to page 13, it does give you an estimate of hitting fund balance. So page 13, there's a number in parentheses. So if you spend every single penny in this budget, it's showing that you could hit fund balance, $8.3 million.
What would we say?
I propose, at the most, on my estimate, $5 million. And only about a little over a million of that is not reoccurring. The capital outlay is a one-time expense. So we're looking at around $4 million could be reoccurring. And yes, TESA funding is about a million dollars more this year than last year, but everything is costing more. Textbooks are another $100,000. Building insurance is up. Once we get the wellness centers, there'll be extra electricity, extra utilities, extra janitorial supplies. So I calculated in about a million dollars worth of inflation within this budget on a $40 million budget, just because I don't know, and we got to have that there in case things do cost more.
Conservately.
Yes. I mean, again, overestimate expenditures, and then conservatively estimate revenue. And then this is where worst-case scenario is, but like Tommy says, come in well under. Yes. But this is how it looks, and it always looks. We turned in a budget last year that showed we were hitting fund balance $2 million. Are we going to? We've got a month left, but no, we're not going to unless something happens in this last month that I, we don't know about. So we're going to come in well under budget this year and even be able to increase fund balance. So again, we always overestimate our budget.
Question?
Pretty well self-explained, though. Pretty well explained.
Now, I do want to hit 143, not leave it out before we move on to anything else. So if you go to page 14, you're looking at the cafeteria budget. And now they also have non-certified employees, about 38, that they would have to offer insurance to. And then they would give their employees also the 10% raise if the budget passes. And you can look at their fund balance on page 16. So let's go there and look. And of course, their budget's much smaller. So right now, they are almost at a million dollars. They're at $966,221 fund balance. If they give the raises and offer their insurance, they will hit fund balance, and they're expecting it might drop down to about $600,000. So again, that's what they predicted to be worst-case scenario.
And that's favorable, yeah.
That is, uh-huh. Got 143 cafeteria money, yeah.
Commissioners, do you have any questions?
I have some, but I don't know if this most commissioners give actual is. Ask this question back when I spoke to y'all about how loaded all this. Do y'all have an answer on what doing this financial is going to have to cost taxpayers in Smith County? I mean, I kind of know, I just wonder if y'all. If you just figure out what she says on a job that you're taking on from the school systems, it's pretty, it's what you're going to take on. Now, County's got also pretty different. Also, County's also already funded some of this, any of which you got to. I was just wondering, curiosity, if y'all had presented any kind of estimated cost of what this is going to occur to taxpayers of Smith County by going to the 81 Act?
I was thinking, but I was thinking is, is if we have to hire all new, if nobody came over, that's going to be a cost.
It will be.
Well, either way, whether they come over or not, it's still going to be a cost for the county.
Yeah.
And it's going to be somewhere around $400,000 from what they were paying before. Unless they pay them a lot less. I mean, the numbers are what they are.
True. I mean, but, you know, you going to pick up the costs of the school reports?
Yes.
Do you know what that cost is? I just figured.
I don't, I don't understand. What was your question?
Does the county commissioners, now, I asked this question when I spoke to y'all, when y'all voted that. Did somebody give y'all a budget figure or any kind of estimate what this is going to cost the county to go to the 81? How much money would it cost?
There has not been a budget figure given to us, except for in the budget finance committee meetings, when Daisy presented that to the committee. She's going to, of course, fill the same number of positions that y'all, whether they come over or not. She thinks that that's how many that it will take to run the office. So it would be around whatever y'all's portion is, plus what we're already paying. It's my understanding.
That's what, that would, you're correct. That's what. I think you're going to be looking, it says well over $800,000.
Just in those financial people?
With the ones, with y'all's portion, because we, of course, cannot pull that from y'all. With that portion, yes, you're between $400,000 and $500,000.
Yeah, and that would probably be for the employees. That's not counting the office space, whatever.
Office equipment.
That's probably, salaries, benefits.
I believe that the office space, I don't want to say tech, but they got that worked out as far as within the existing building, so. But there was, there was a quote for desk and stuff like that, but it was mental.
Questions?
You got anything else?
In case, I want to know that I have, we're not doing anything extra this summer, painting other than the minimal, like you asked me to do some landscaping and stuff, stuff that has to be done, because we're going to operate, if the budget don't pass by law, we're going to have to operate on last year's budget. And with inflation, with knowing we're going to have to fit some extra teachers and all that and other, so if you get complaints other than what we had already obligated to, like we dumped off some wax on one of the floors and that, but we shut painting and wax, we're just going on with skeleton budget. Because if we have to operate on last year's budget, we want to make sure that we're not troubled or, so.
Any other commissioners, commissioners, y'all got anything else y'all like to add to? All members?
I'm good.
10 minutes.
You got 10 minutes for anybody? Yes, sir.
Well, I think, I know we were, we were all going to, I went to the budget finance, of course, I know the budget finance, and I know they were talking about y'all coming back, and then we was talking about the 30th or something, and I think I sent an email saying y'all weren't coming to that one. What was going to be the next time we was going to be able to go over the stuff that budget finance adds for y'all?
We took it to the steering committee, like we were supposed to.
Oh, okay. Maybe I wasn't there.
But we weren't asked, I mean, for dates to attend, they just gave us a date, and some of our employees couldn't be there that day on the 30th.
Because if we got to pass something by the end of May, and I know y'all got some conflict there, but I guess we got to get whatever.
This is the third time we've presented.
It's going to be, it's going to be passed by the end of June.
End of June, okay. Well, I know that, I don't even remember what the questions were. I have to go back to my notes and see. I know there was two or three that they asked that day. So is that all, I've been satisfied, I guess? Or, I know we've got one to Thursday night, so, but you said y'all ain't coming to that one. Nobody would be represented there.
Steering committee has all the information.
Steering committee, what?
The budget steering committee that we presented it to.
Budget? So you went again since Saturday?
No.
Oh, okay.
Nothing changed on it?
Uh-uh, nothing's changed.
I wasn't worried that y'all wouldn't come.
I didn't even know anything about it till we were asked.
I believe they just needed information, a lot of information about formulas, TESA formulas.
And we sent, there were some questions. There were, there were some questions sent, and those were answered and sent to Daisy.
Erica Wick and Monta, they were answering. You want a copy? We can get them.
I think they wanted projections, basically. They wanted some projections.
Yeah, and I was advised.
We answered everyone.
I was advised not to project any TESA.
Okay, no, okay.
I was advised by our state fiscal representative not to.
You're talking about the TESA?
Yes.
Okay, I was talking about the questions.
Because he said he couldn't. I asked him if he could help me project them, and he said that he could not do it because it's ever-changing, and for me not to project, he's.
Even though I think this is great, going to fund forever, I wouldn't base my finances on.
Okay. I think that was what they were asking.
Yeah, I would never, I think it would exceed what were our expectations. Don't say that. I would never base the county's finance off of a vocational. That's just.
I think the concerns were that if we're eating up fund balance, what are we going to do?
That's the dilemma in my neighbor county. I mean, you know, we're not, I don't think we get, I don't think the school system has one got anything about 18-year. And I don't foresee us asking for the next, and I hope this is fantastic too, but I would never, I want to make that, you see how the government changes. I would never base my future on vocational, or working students as a whole to fund the county.
Y'all had a few more minutes?
Yes, sir. We've got 10 minutes, so.
I know y'all passed y'all's, or had a, had a survey of your stuff. Could y'all give us an insight maybe what the school system's going to need over like building? I know that, I can imagine what that report would look like. Or is that something y'all want to?
Are you asking for a survey for what, buildings? Yeah, we're going to present that when we get, I didn't know y'all want to get a hammer yet. I'll be happy to bring it if you want. About $75 million left.
I can imagine, because that night I was here, y'all, when y'all passed that.
They're actually, we're at Sunby's, those engineers and architects are coming, but we didn't really need that right now, so.
So when is that something y'all going to bring forward to look at as a bond for both sides?
Yeah. What we got in mind to do is when we bring that to the commission.
If you'll get us on the agenda.
If you'll get us on the agenda to speak, we're going to bring these people to the meeting so that you can ask, as the commission can ask questions of why they come up with such a price thing, you know? Why they doing, why they doing this and why they're doing that? We're bringing them, that was part of the deal, about 30.
And that was 100% unbiased and solicit, that was, you know, I told them I didn't want to know, I didn't want to give them a thing. It ended up costing us for about $100,500.
Is that something you want to give immediate action on pretty fast?
I think there's some free, they couldn't get over, they were very, to be in the business they're in, they were very complimentary of a building, so kind of shake of buildings they in, electric, engineering structure, they couldn't believe how good they were. So that was really a surprise. We thought they were, but they were really, it's just.
Roofs and.
It's really, if you saw it, it's really cool the way they actually done the, from the 911 addresses to the, to show where the growth, where you're going to have to have it, once you're going to have to have, and they, especially.
I think they'll answer the commission's questions about where the growth is and where they expect.
I was shocked when they showed it.
And what numbers we're looking at for, because they have a formula that they go by, per family, per amount of kids that would move with, that comes in with that family, and they can give you, it's like, say again, a formula, that they can give you what they expect for Feed Creek or Humbleton, what, what the number is going to be in X amount of years.
Their, their biggest concern was when it, what they're seeing is switching from houses to apartments. Houses are talking about a five-year growth. Apartments are looking at massive in a year. And so if this apartment thing is changing, if it changes from home-based to apartment-based, you're a big trouble. And that's, that was their biggest concern, I think, going into it. But, and I think that's what they saw when they got to talking to the, to the city mayors and so on, is apartment phase, and that scares them because how quick they go up. If, if you, everybody had agreed with what we're going to do, and you had the money sitting there, they tell us it'd be a five to seven-year process of actually getting children in the building, or students in the building. So that's where you get into the dilemma. If these apartments are. If you, if these apartments are for real, they're coming, you got a massive, if, if they're houses, you're gonna get some time. Hope it's a combination, and they get shaped, but they, they need to be the ones asked, I think, it would have more validity to them saying it than, than me sitting here saying it.
Anything else?
It was actually a good study, it was, it was actually an eye-opening study. And that's why I feel like commissioners, y'all need to see this thing. And like I said, we had no ties to these guys, they, they're from Knoxville, ain't from around here.
Even when y'all, we gonna start board meeting here in about six minutes or five, any y'all in restrooms or whatever?
They're sitting there on the desk.
If you're not, we're gonna thank all of y'all for being here, we appreciate you coming, wish you'd be here to ever meet you.
Yeah.
That way, and, uh, you got questions asked? We are, and like I say, we're tickled enough that all three of y'all showed up, we just wish the whole commission would show that way for his questions, someone has questions, maybe you can go back now and try to explain some of the things that you've asked him about.
So this is a question that was sent by Naomi, y'all have submitted a reply to it.
Yes, the same email she probably forwarded, you had all the.
No, I didn't get forwarded, or I got it forwarded, I, I was forwarded by one of y'all.
Okay.
No, I didn't.
Good luck, yep. Thank y'all.